Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this public caucus. We've invited Geisinger in here this evening. I know that Councilman Schuster is on his way. I think he'll be here, probably within the next few minutes. But I do want to welcome Ron Beer, Chief Administrative Officer for Geisinger Northeast, Renee Blackowitz, Associate Vice President for Clinical Operations, and Dr. Steve Bernetti, the Medical Director for Geisinger. Obviously, this is our first chance as a council, as a whole, to hear from Geisinger about -- we've asked them to come in and discuss some of their plans and what they're hoping to do should the zoning ordinance be passed. So we thought it was important to have them in for a public caucus, explain to all of us and the audience and the public as to exactly what the plans are. And then we're going to try our best to have a hard stop around 5:45 so that we can begin the public hearing. And that way, the citizens will be able to comment about the upcoming zoning ordinance. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Ron Beer, the Chief Administrative Officer for Geisinger Northeast. I would ask everyone if you could please sit quietly while they do their presentation so that they can be heard and we can all hear what they have to say. And then we'll ask the same thing tonight when we begin the public hearing, that when each individual comes up to speak, please respect each individual while they're trying to -- we want to hear everyone's input. Okay, thank you, Mr. Beer.
All right, thank you, Mr. King. Do we have -- do we need to start with this? Want to present this? Do we need to present -- presentation? Well, Mr. Waldenberger is teeing up the presentation. I just want to say thank you for letting -- allowing us to come in and talk a little bit about our plans, what we're looking to do in the city of Scranton. It's really an honor to be a part of the Scranton-Abington Planning Association's comprehensive plan. You know, we think that when this is complete, it's going to produce an overall vision for our future of not just Scranton, but all of the surrounding communities. We're really excited to be a part of it. We know we're a very small piece of that. But even though we're a small piece of it, we feel like we're a really important piece because we impact the quality of life in our community. Again, you know, when we look at the SAPA and the nine municipalities that are included in this, in the SAPA, that's our service area. Those are the families we take care of, those are the patients we take care of. So we're looking forward to being a part of this, and we know that we can impact the quality of life in that area. GCMC has become a Level 2 Trauma Center, and we truly become a regional referral center. We serve the tertiary referral needs of all of those nine municipalities, all of the community, well outside of Lackawanna County. So as Mr. King had said, my name is Ron Beer. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer for Geisinger's Northeast Region. I am actually joined today by two of my trusted colleagues, Renee Blackowitz and Dr. Steve Bernetti. I'm going to turn it over to Renee to introduce herself, and then we'll turn it over to Dr. Bernetti to introduce himself.
Good evening, thank you for having us. So Renee Blackowitz.
Excuse me, Renee. And I'll ask all the speakers if you would pass the microphone so that --
Sorry.
And try to -- do you notice I have my principal's voice? So please do that so everyone can hear you.
I can do that.
Thank you.
So again, Renee Blackowitz, I am the Associate Vice President for Clinical Operations. I've been at CMC for the past 30 years of my career. I went to CMC School of Nursing and worked as a nurse in the intensive care unit for many, many years. My role today is that of operations of the hospital, so I have an impact on what happens to the day-to-day operations within the facility, and it's been an honor to be there.
My name is Stephen Bernetti. I'm a board-certified emergency medicine physician. I've been practicing emergency medicine for 25-plus years, and I am not a Geisinger employee. Okay, my partners and I have been staffing CMC, the Emergency Department, since 1998. I am also the County 911 Center Medical Director. I've been in that position for many, many years. My role currently now is I manage our emergency medicine group and act as a liaison within Geisinger Administration.
All right, thank you. Just briefly, the presentation we're going to show you tonight is similar to what we've presented to various stakeholders in a number of different meetings over the course of the last few years. We've updated and adjusted the content for relevance and time. We'll address the current state of healthcare in our community and the impact it's having to our friends and family. We'll address concerns over the land development process. We know there's been questions over the timing of impact studies, traffic studies, and things of that nature. And finally, we'll address the concerns that may have been raised to counsel throughout the formal process and the informal process. We can provide you copies of the presentation once we're through, if you would like that. And we're going to save plenty of time at the end for questions and answers. So let me just start with this. This is our why slide. It's a little busy, but if you bear with me, we'll walk you through it. I think you've seen this slide before in different versions in different places, but it really illustrates the headwinds that are against -- that we're pushing against in the healthcare industry. Right now, I'm sure you're hearing it from your police, from your fire, you're hearing it from your neighbors, you're hearing it from your friends. Each of you probably have a personal anecdote about the challenges you or a loved one have faced accessing healthcare over the last few years. There's a growing concern in the region about the stability of our healthcare market, and quite frankly, it's for good reason. Our market has significantly changed in the last several years. When we purchased Geisinger Community Medical Center, Scranton had three large hospitals. Our community hospitals were doing really well, and we had a fourth specialty hospital that joined the fold not long after that. Unfortunately, a number of really strong headwinds have changed the healthcare landscape forever. As a result, we've seen Tyler Hospital in Tuncanet close, we've seen Berwick Hospital in Berwick close, we've seen Moses Taylor close, Regional Hospital in Wilkes-Barre General have reduced capacity, and First Hospital, the area's only behavioral health hospital, recently closed. The ripple effect has impacted our skilled nursing facilities, it's impacted our home health, our hospice, our transportation, and 911 services. At the same time, our demographics started to shift. Our population has been fairly stagnant for several years. We've seen about a 1.6% increase. Now, that doesn't take into consideration what we consider the COVID growth. We know that there's been a large influx of people who've moved in from the city as they started really coming in at the beginning of the pandemic. It's more of the COVID effect, the work-from-home effect, taking advantage of the quality of life of Pennsylvania. It's great to have those residents. Those numbers aren't showing up in some of our demographics yet. Our older population, though, those that are 65 and better, that population's increased by 15%. Unfortunately, when we get older, we consume more healthcare. So a 15% increase in an over-65 population disproportionately impacts the amount of healthcare that is consumed. The third leg of this stool is our aging infrastructure. At GCMC, we have roughly 2/3 of our beds are semi-private. At any given day, there's a small percentage of those beds that are blocked due to infectious disease isolation or other clinical indications that effectively reduce our capacity. Semi-private beds do lead to lower staff engagement, lower patient satisfaction, and have the potential to leave -- to lead to overall negative clinical outcomes.
Ron, I'm going to stop you for a second. Is it possible to close that window? I mean, I know we probably need some air in here, but it's affecting at least my ability to hear, I don't know about anybody else's. Thank you.
You know, the parking garages are undersized, and they're nearing the end of life, and the technology, the diagnostics, imaging support needed to supplement today's modern care teams are woefully inadequate, and the infrastructure to expand and upgrade and modernize those just doesn't exist. For those of you who've had an opportunity to tour the hospital recently, we pointed out the new CT that didn't fit into the existing CT gantry. We had to put it in a separate location. The culmination of significantly reduced capacity in the market, the increase in the clinical demand, and the aging infrastructure has created a perfect storm for our current healthcare crisis. We're consistently running in excess of 100% occupancy. That means every day, we start the day with patients who are admitted to our hospital who need an inpatient bed, and they don't have one, they're in our hallways. We start every day with patients who have completed a surgery, who need an inpatient bed, who are holding in our PACU. We routinely treat patients in our emergency room in the hallway, and we've now just started moving that care far forward into the waiting room so that we can get cared in a timely fashion. We're going to go into more detail on a few of these items as we move along. We're seeing over 250 mental health crisis patients per month, many of which we can't place. With the loss of First Hospital, there is a lack of beds in the community, so many of these patients are waiting 12, 24, 48 hours or more, and when we do place them, unfortunately, we have to place them out of service area. And in some cases, that means we're taking an ambulance and a crew and taking a patient all the way across the state. Our admissions are up 6%, and our acuity is up even more than that, which means we're having -- we're seeing more patients, and we're seeing sicker patients. Now, I'll now turn the presentation over to Dr. Bernetti, who will highlight how all of this impacts the ED at Geisinger Community Medical Center.
So this is a little bit of a busy slide, but I'm going to talk a little bit -- before I go into the numbers on this slide, I want to talk about what the essence of emergency medicine is. And so probably everybody here, when we think of emergency medicine, we think of heart attacks, we think of stroke. I think of speed. So emergency medicine is all about speed, is all about how quickly we can get the patient's head in the bed. Emergency medicine is not about emergency physicians, emergency medicine is not about emergency nurses. The most precious resource that we have in emergency medicine is the bed. Without the bed, I cannot do anything. I cannot resuscitate you, I cannot even do a simple EKG to see if you're having a heart attack. That said, we take a look at some of these numbers. We have Moses Taylor, which is now closed. That's 32,000 annual patients that now have to be absorbed between Regional Hospital and Geisinger Community Medical Center. Now, Geisinger Community Medical Center, we were already at capacity. We were already seeing about 140 to 150 patients a day. That's double the capacity that our ER was built to handle. Since that Emergency Department closure of Moses Taylor, we've gone from 140, 150 a day, up to sometimes 180, 190 a day. When that happens, people wait. We cannot get them back to be seen. We cannot put that head in the bed. When we can't put the head in the bed, I can't treat you. When I can't treat you, patients wait. When patients wait, bad things happen. So from a non-Geisinger employee, from a advocate of emergency medicine, and someone who's grew up in this community, who is supportive of expanding emergency services in the community, any health system, Geisinger, Community Health Services, any health system that is looking to expand services within our community should be supported because it is desperately, desperately needed. Okay.
So beyond the emergency department, what happens? So our hospital is operating at 109% capacity and sometimes more on the inpatient side. So what does that mean? Well, that means that our beds are full. That means that every available space within the hospital is being utilized for patients. That means that patients in our emergency room are going to wait longer to get upstairs to us. So why is the volume increasing? We've talked a little bit about closures of hospitals, the market is changing, there's an increased demand for care, but there's also increased acuity of these patients. We have a sicker population coming to see us these days. We also have longer lengths of stay. It takes us a lot longer to get patients placed outside of the walls of the hospital because of their complexity. There's a demand for healthcare, and it's only going to continue to increase with our aging population, with the sicker population, and then with the loss of one of the city's emergency departments, we're going to see a massive increase in not only emergency room volume, but the patients that need to be admitted to our facilities. Next slide. So when we think about world-class care within the walls of Scranton, I can -- I cannot talk about this slide without being very happy and thrilled about the amazing team that we have at GCMC to take care of our patients. These folks come to work every day, and they strive for excellence in the care that we provide these patients, regardless of the demands and the volumes that they're seeing today. Our patients tell us, "My nurse was great. They treated me with dignity and respect. Care was fantastic from the beginning to end." GCMC is the home of Lackawanna County's only trauma center and has been since 1989. We have had over 200 trauma activations on a monthly basis. So what does that mean? That means that we have a complex, critically injured or ill patient that's coming to our emergency room for care. That takes a whole lot of resources. A trauma activation brings many members of the team, so we have trauma surgeons, we have OR staff, we have ER staff, we have chaplains, we have ER nurses, and they all converge to care for this very complicated case.
Sir, can you expand on that?
So not all of you were privy, so Dr. Rothschild took a tour with me, okay, due to the Emergency Department the other day. And she came through, and she witnessed exactly what we're trying to convey to you. Every hallway stretcher was filled, there's patients lying in stretchers, standing in hallways. The hallway that went out to the EMS bay was lined with ambulances waiting to unload stretchers. Now, when those ambulances are sitting in those hallways, they're not out in the community waiting to respond to your 911 emergencies. So in the midst of all that chaos, we got a pediatric trauma alert. So I took Dr. Rothschild into the pediatric bay, our one pediatric trauma bay in the entire county. It was the only bed that we had available for that patient. Now imagine if this was a multi-vehicle accident. Imagine if there was multiple patients in that car. Imagine if there was multiple pediatric patients in that car. Where would we have taken care of that patient? Where would we have put the second pediatric trauma that day? We didn't have any resources.
So now that we've talked -- so now that we've talked about the why, now we get into a little bit of the what. And this all starts with strategy. So this has been an evolution. When we purchased the hospital, we knew we had to adapt. It was a well-functioning, well-respected Level 2 Trauma Center, but we knew we had to adapt. And so we started embarking on a strategic plan. We evaluated the current demographics, we evaluated the disease burden, identified gaps in key service areas and providers, we aligned a clinical service plan to leverage regional and system capabilities. We worked with a team of experts to overlay the current facility portfolio on top of that strategic plan. We're looking specifically for quantity and quality. Do you have enough of fill-in-the-blank, ORs, rooms, pediatric trauma rooms, et cetera? And the ones that you do have, are they big enough? Are they technologically advanced enough? Are they in the right spot? Do they have the right adjacencies? When we were done with all of that, that kind of laid out where our work needed to begin, and then we had to prioritize. A key consideration and a core tenet of our vision is we want to make better health easier. It's more than just a tagline. So we started moving as much as we could out of CMC, out of those four walls, pushing it into the community to make it easy and accessible. And we're going to talk about some of those. And then, once we had a working document, we really prioritized, and we came up with these six key priorities. The first one was always replace and expand the emergency room. The second one, private beds. I can't stress to you how important it is to have private beds in today's environment. We wanted to modernize and expand our diagnostic imaging. We needed -- Scranton needed, our community needed a comprehensive cancer center, a one-stop-shop. We needed to establish medical office buildings to grow these programs, to grow these physician practices. On the GCMC campus right now, the only place for a clinical program, an outpatient clinical program to grow, is in a multi-specialty clinic that's embedded in the hospital. The professional office building, which used to be the old school of nursing, is not -- it won't meet code for a current clinical occupancy. We only use it for offices, nor would it be big enough to accommodate a modern practice anyway. And finally, expand psychiatric and behavioral health. This was a priority before First Health -- before First Hospital closed, and so it became an even more important priority since then. Renee, would you want to take us through what we've done to accomplish those?
So to Ron's point, we continue to move services out of the hospital walls in order to create additional space for patients. This slide just shows a couple locations that we have at the moment where we've opened or are opening just to accomplish that task. These services can operate independently, and that's an important point. They can operate without the need to be in acute care facility. Moving an emergency room out of a trauma center takes the patient away from needed care, an OR, a cath lab. We got to have those services together. This is an acute care, critical care facility. We look at this slide, and you see our medical office building on Olive Street growing. We have our Geisinger Orthopedics in the Steamtown Mall. We have our behavioral health hospital in Musick, which is going to be a 96-bed inpatient hospital that will accommodate adolescents, which is not in this area today. Our kids are going to Pittsburgh or Philadelphia if they need inpatient behavioral health care. Our cancer center, and then Geisinger Mount Pleasant. So as we move services off-campus, we continue to look at the structure of GCMC, right? So we're looking at our emergency room. That ED was built for half of the volume that we're seeing today. So what does that look like? Patients are being treated in hallways, offices, waiting rooms. CMC is 2/3 semi-private. Consider this, a physician has to come in and tell you something very sensitive, and your neighbor is going to hear exactly what he says to you about your cancer diagnosis or whatever he's going to tell you that you wouldn't want others to hear. We need to upgrade our imaging. CMC houses the oldest MRI in the system. I think it's about 17 years old at this point. We worked really hard to find space for it, but guess what? There wasn't. We had to move a service out to create space for a new MRI that is still not at CMC just yet. Parking. Parking here is an enabling project only. It is not the project. This is a clinical expansion, that's what we're looking for. We need to -- we need to expand parking in the sense that it's going to allow us to create clinical space.
So as you can see, as part of our strategic planning, we worked really hard to come up with alternative solutions. We spent a lot of time trying to figure out what needed to be on the campus of GCMC. We moved those outpatient services to locations that were better suited, easier to get to, easier to access, that had complementary services. The orthopedic investment we made in Steamtown, you know, is a prime example. It is a center of excellence where you -- it's a one-stop-shop, orthopedic, sports medicine, podiatry, physical and occupational therapy. We can put it all there. It's easy in, easy out, easy parking. It made a lot of sense to go down there. Our primary care, move it out to Mount Pleasant. The Olive Street, that allowed us to grow specialty programs that didn't exist in Scranton prior to us coming in. We've been able to continue to invest in specialty and subspecialty services that, again, don't need to be in the hospital. We've maximized the space in the hospital, and we're now at a spot where we have to actually come to you for the rezoning because we still have three key priorities we have to address. So this is kind of an example. You've seen the presentations, you've seen the images. We didn't want to rehash those. This is just a nice, simple summary of what we're looking at. The big orange box with the three Xs, that's probably the most important one to focus on. That's the clinical expansion. We've spent the least amount of time on that in conversations because that seems to be the one area that the conversation doesn't always go to, but it is the reason we're here When we look at the blocks to either side, on the 300 block or the 200 block on the left, that's an area where we're looking at putting structured parking, and the 200 block on the right is an area to look at structured parking. Again, as Renee said, parking is an enabling project. It allows us to actually move those -- move all of our parking off to the side, frees up those aging parking garages that we have that are undersized, and then we can start thinking about how expansion looks on across the 300 block of Colfax. Now, when we've gone through this, this has been multiple evolutions of this as we've talked to different stakeholders, as we've talked to neighbors, we've received input. And the stakeholders are our neighbors, our elected officials, our clinical teams, and there's a lot of reasons why we continue to shift about where we're going to put it. You know, one of the things that we talk a lot about is adjacencies. When that emergency patient hits that door, in a perfect world, we want to be able to treat them in the trauma bay that Dr. Bernetti talked about, take them right to the OR, right to the ICU. Time is critical when it comes to these trauma patients. If we put those clinical services across the street, and we have to take them up, over a bridge, down to the OR, then up to the ICU, it becomes a real challenging patient flow issue. Through conversations with our clinical team, they highlighted some of the challenges of putting clinical services in that location. When we talked to the neighbors, they highlighted, "This looks like sprawl. There's a lot of activity that goes on at the hospital. Now you're going to move that across two additional blocks. Is there a way you can consolidate it?" And so we said, "Well, let's take a look at it." And so we pulled it all back together, and we said, "If we take all of the high-intensity activity and we put it in the 300 block, and then we put parking garages in the 200 and the 400 block, that's going to be quieter for the neighbors. It's going to be quieter for the neighborhood. All of that high-intensity activity will stay where the existing hospital's at." And so we relooked at our design. So this is an evolution of multiple conversations over the last couple of years to get us to
So upcoming opportunities, things we need to address, right? So we're here today to talk about zoning and understand that we know that land development is really guided by state law and what the next steps of this will be. Zoning, step one. And then we have opportunity to talk a little bit further about civil studies, land development plans, address the noise, light, traffic, safety, the aesthetics of the building. We're committed to build a neighbor advisory board to help address and discuss this work collectively and collaboratively. We need to do this together.
So we're going to do a -- we're going to have a test on this when we're done, so if everybody goes and takes some notes on this. This was actually a pretty eye-opening for me as well. This is your typical land development process in Pennsylvania. The only reason why we wanted to show this is to show that we're at the very beginning. And so when we go through, a lot of times we're challenged on, "Do you have more complete plans? You have to be thinking about something different. There has to be more to it." The reality is, is there can't be. You know, on a typical project, architectural and engineering fees can run you anywhere from 3% to 4% on a typical $200 to $300 million project. That can be $12 million. If we were to invest even half of that and then come to zoning and find that we didn't have the right setbacks, the right anything, that's money that's just a sunk cost. It didn't make sense to invest in really detailed drawings this early in the process. So as you can see, where we're at at the very beginning. Zoning sets everything. It gives us the setbacks, it gives us the permeable space, it gives us the height. From there, we can move into From there, we can move into true land use development. This will be a 12 to 18-month project to get us through land development. But what that does is that's when we start to do all of those civil studies. And we've made a commitment to our neighbors. We're going to look at light. We're going to look at noise. We're going to look at traffic patterns because it's in all of our best interest. Right now, there is a really annoying beeping on our garage, a really annoying beeping. And I think if I took a poll of everybody behind me, they'd all say, hallelujah, Ron. Absolutely. And, but the reason it's there is because we don't want a pedestrian to get hit. And the way our parking garage is set up, as a car comes out, you have to be on the park, on the sidewalk before you can see left or right. That beeping is the only thing that keeps our pedestrians safe. That's our staff, that's our family members, that's our guests. So we, we agree, we don't want that beeping. But that requires us to design something different, to separate pedestrians and traffic in some meaningful way. Talk about light. There's some concerns about how, how light actually infiltrates people's homes. Okay? That's the kind of stuff that we want to fix ourselves. We've got parking garages where we have programs where we have LED lights. If you go to Pittston and you go to our community practice, as you drive in, the lights come on, and as you go by, the lights go off. It's energy efficient, but it also reduces light pollution. In addition to that, we want to do some shade and sun studies. The last thing we want to do is impact somebody's quality of life while we're trying to fix the quality of life. That's an oxymoron. What we want to do is we want to make sure that we are not impacting people's ability to enjoy their yards, to enjoy their gardens. That's going to require some sun shade studies, things of that nature. All of that comes later in the process. And most of those we're required to do. Some of them we're going to do because it's just the right thing to do. It makes sense. So the last piece of this, you know, we wanted to go through and we wanted to address a number of concerns that have come up, either to council or to us directly, to some cases during our community events, our conversations with our neighbors. And so what we've done is we've kind of bucketed them, and, and we hope to be able to address most of them now. So one of the main ones that I think comes up more times than not is the 200 block. And so, you know, part of the rezoning question is, the 200 block is taller, it's 100 feet max, and the 400 block is 45 feet. One of the biggest, you know, one of the biggest challenges is it's a shorter block. And so when we look at our parking count, we look at what we need to replace where we're at, and when we look at what we think we're going to need going forward, that was how we were able to get the right parking count with some room to grow. We don't have a ton of room to grow parking, but it allows us to give some room to grow. Essentially, the 200 block is the same size as our parking garage, essentially, the one that's there now. The 400 block's roughly the same size as the old Audubon School. Yep. Our goal was to try to mirror that height so that we didn't have any additional impact to the community, yet still hit our parking, our parking count. Impact on property values, one of the things that we've done as we've gone through and we've looked at, you know, are we having a negative impact on property values? And the data would suggest something different. When we looked at the MLS listings over the last five years, the Hill section is a really vibrant community. The property values have grown well over, about 120%. So the hospital has been there for multiple decades. The hospital is a vibrant part of that community, always has been, always will. It has not impacted the property values of the, of the, of the Hill section prior, and we don't believe it'll impact the, the property values of the Hill section post either. We think a thriving, growing community hospital will enhance the, the property values of the community. Relocating services, we talked about this downtown. We have moved as much as we can downtown. We have tried to do everything we possibly can to get outpatient services, high-volume traffic services, out of the core of the Hill section, try to get them downtown, try to get them to other parts of the community, make them convenient for people who are going to be accessing them. So we've worked really hard on that. What is left is the critical components of a trauma center, the pieces that have to go together. So anything that now leaves that building, they all have to go together because they are integral. And when you think about that, and you think about that pediatric patient that Dr. Burnett talked about, the ER was only a piece of that. The imaging, the OR, the ICU, all of those pieces then intertwined to provide that best care for that patient. Taxes and pilot is another one that people talk about. They talk about the tax rule, taking off 25, 25 houses off the tax rule. One of the things that most people don't realize about a nonprofit hospital is we have an economic impact of about $600 million, indirect and indirect, every year. That's the type, so when, you know, the, the folks come to work, they stop and they get gas, they, after work, they go to their dry, they drop off their dry cleaning, they get their haircut. They spend the money in our community. In 2021, GCMC provided more than $74 million in community benefits, in addition to that, including uncompensated care and community assistance. We support a lot of other nonprofits, and we make the investments because we believe that being a good neighbor is more than just being a good neighbor. It's investing in services for folks. There's a lot of social determinants of healthcare. We spend a lot of time talking about that because by the time you develop congestive heart disease, right? There's a lot of things that contributed to that. And a lot of those things are social determinants, are things that we invest in. So we invest in programs that help that. We invest in nonprofits that actually work to make sure that there's no food deserts in Scranton, to make sure that there's transportation, to make sure that there's services available. All right, let me send this over to Renee, if you want to talk about a few more of these.
Sure.
So one of the other areas that comes up frequently is communication with neighbors. We had a large community meeting in April of 2022, and we heard a lot of concerns at that point with regards to the expansion. There was a lot of worry, and, and we understood that. And, and through that, we were able to make some decisions, like the consolidation over the 300 block, which made the most sense. At that point, we developed a phone line, like a hotline for concerns for neighbors. We also put an email address together that they can communicate with us through that. One of the things we also did is we have weekly internal meetings to talk about what concerns were raised, what can we do about it? Are there questions that need to be answered? Are there events or things that are going to happen that are going to be disruptive within the neighborhood, community, residential area? And do we need to communicate that? We also got together again in April, or I'm sorry, in September, to have a little bit more focused conversation. And at that point, we were asked for some renderings. And so we were able to get basically blocks on a page in order to just to show conceptually what this could look like. We did share that with the neighbors, and we did share that with many others. We also, there was a walk-around that occurred in November with folks, just to take a look at spaces that we would not consider developing into a building, but more of green space parcels around the hospital and across the street from the 400 block Colfax parking garage. We are, again, committed to forming this committee. I think it's incredibly important that we have conversations together and really look at the studies together and see what needs to be done in order to expand the hospital, but create this comfortable environment that we both can rely on each other in. So potential to expand elsewhere if the zoning is revised. So we want to stay in Scranton. Scranton is where many of us grew up. This hospital's been there for over 100 years. It has grown. We have done amazing things and saved many, many lives in Scranton and beyond. It is our priority to have this conversation with you all in this community and have the ability to rezone this area and expand this hospital. This is where we want to be. From a financial performance perspective, you know, Geisinger is incredibly innovative, and they do a lot of amazing work when it comes to thinking outside of the box and how do we care for patients in an innovative fashion? And so, well, yes, everybody has financial concerns, and, and yes, every healthcare industry, every healthcare entity is struggling. Yes, that is a true statement. We are working towards excellent care, providing access to our patients, and that is going to help us move things along with regards to healthcare quality within Scranton and in this community.
Mr. King, we've tried to be as transparent and open as we can about our strategy, about addressing some of the challenges, some of the issues and concerns that have come to council's attention. And at this, at this point, we're open to questions from, from council.
Okay. I'm going to start, I'm going to go around the day as the way that we typically do in our meetings. So I'll ask Mr. Smurl if you have any questions at this time.
Yes, Mr. King, I, I do have some questions. My first question is, how many ER rooms are existing at GCMC today?
38.
38. And if the expansion was approved, well, if the zoning ordinance was approved, how many do you expect to add ER rooms?
So one of the things, when we showed the map, we talked about where we're at with the process. What will happen was, once we start, once we get approval for zoning, we'll start in what we call programming. So when we look at the demographics, we look at what's changed in the market, and we start figuring, backing our way into that number, trying to figure out how many ERs we need, how many trauma bays we are going to need. And then as we start to do that, that starts to feed the inpatient rooms, it feeds the ORs. So it becomes somewhat of a math exercise, but it all starts with making sure that we understand the current demographics as they exist today, not three years ago when we started the process, but today. So we don't have a number on what that number will be, but what we can tell you is 38 is not enough. It's woefully inadequate. Most likely, there will be at least three, if not four, trauma bays. That's probably consistent with our volume, and there may be an additional one. Again, all suspect at this point. It all needs to be verified and validated with the existing patient and disease load.
So you say, before you said there would be between 12 and 18 months of, of just developing the land to get a layout for the land, the land. So how long do you think it would, this project would be? Is this a five-year, a 10-year project? And when you're looking at, if it's seven or eight years away, are you looking at adding, doubling your ER size now to prepare for something in the future? Is that, and how do you get to that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Because, so the, the land use development is a 12 to 18-month process, and we can run programming in parallel with that. So we, we know the size, the max size of building we could get on that space. You know, then we can start, we can actually start doing things in parallel. While we're, we're going through, doing all of the traffic studies, we're doing all of the civil studies, we're working on our programming. So at the same time, you know, we're lining up all of our, our, our design work. So you figure 18 months for land development, maybe another six, eight months of, of just finalizing design. We're putting a shovel in the ground, let's just say, in two years. And then we're building it out over two years. So maybe your five-year time horizon is accurate. So what do we do to get us to five years? Part of it is leveraging regional assets. So we've been able to, to do this work and expand in Luzerne County. We have new assets, new capabilities coming online frequently. We just opened some new spaces. We're constantly looking at how do we reevaluate what we currently have? That multi-specialty clinic that we talked about that's inside the hospital, we're looking at how do we incorporate that? How do we build out our urgent care capacity for a pop-off valve? How do we continue to expand our primary care base so that we can offload some of the, the ER work? So part of our strategy is immediate. How do we take care of the population today? And, and again, that's continued investment and utilizing our regional capacity. And then the long-term is a final solution for Scranton, which includes the expanded emergency room, expanded inpatient bed capability, and upgraded radiology and imaging. Did that answer your question, sir?
Pretty close. The, the other, what you had said before, there, there's a big concern, there always has been, communication between the neighbors and GCMC. You had stated before that you do have a dedicated number. Is there a dedicated person for community connection between, do you have a liaison between the actual neighbors and GCMC to all your properties in, in this area? Or how, how do I call you and say, I have a problem with something on the right corner of the ER?
Yep. We have a dedicated, we, we do have a dedicated line, and there is an individual that answers those messages for us.
How is that advertised? How do you advertise that? How would I, how would I know that?
So they made, when, when the line was first put together and the email was first put together, these individuals went door-to-door and handed out flyers to folks if there were any issues that they can communicate directly with them. We've had neighbors actually come to the house, to the administrative house, and my card has been handed out as well with my cell phone number that is on that card. So folks can get ahold of me as well and have.
So if I were to call GCMC, I open, I go on my phone and I push GCMC, I get a switchboard?
You would, yes.
And do I get a list of people that, who I would be looking for and say, community relations person?
Yes.
That is listed in your, in your list?
Yes.
Okay. When, when, when you're making your exterior design for the exterior, how do you plan on having, if you plan on having the neighbors involved in the actual look of the property, the, the actual exterior design? Interior, pretty much, that's totally yours, but on the exterior, that people have to look at.
Sure.
How would you involve the neighbors into that, that stage?
Well, I, I think the first order of business is to create this advisory committee, board, whatever the case may be.
Sorry.
That's okay. So we would create this advisory board first, right? And I think we need to understand each other a little bit better, so there'd be a lot of conversation. The goal is going to be transparency here and should be and is. We need to talk about what the building needs to look like, and then I want to share and share alike. So we'll get design and then share and see what, what is liked best, what, what looks best, what's going to blend into the community better.
Okay. And I also believe someone from the city, from the zoning department or someone, should be involved every step of the way between you and the neighbors.
Sure.
I have one final thing. How many parking spots are you looking at in your, your development?
So in the, in the new parking garages, we're looking at approximately 1,675.
1,675? All right. That's all I have for now. I thank you for attending and answering my questions, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Smurl. Mr. Schuster's not here. I'll ask Dr. Rod Charles if she has any questions or comments.
I do. I have a lot of questions. So I'll, I'll try to be quick with them. Some of them have already been answered, so forgive me as I sort through this, but thank you for coming tonight. I really felt like it was important to, to have you here tonight for the caucus so that we could hear from you, the public could hear from you about, about your potential plans with the expansion and, because we, we still did have so many lingering questions as well. So the, the largest point of contention seems to be with the height of the building on the 200 block of Colfax now. Is there a reason why that can't be reduced a few stories and parking continue into Neog?
So when we look at the numbers of parking spaces that we have available today with the two existing garages, the parking in Neog, a lot that we use in Dunmore, that gives us about 1,400 spaces. If we, if we decrease the size of the garage to be, to replicate what we have on the 400 block, we will be worse than we are today. So it, I, it will exacerb- So it, I, it will exacerbate the parking issues in Scranton around CMC, for sure.
Okay, and will you be looking into possibility of going down into the ground?
Yeah, I think we have to look at all possibilities. Yep.
And will the garage be tiered, or?
Yeah, one of the things that, as we go through the process, you know, we know there's bedrock under there, we just don't know where it's at. We don't know how, you know, what it's composed of. So as part of our engineering studies, when we, we start that land use, it'll be figuring out how deep we can go. If it requires blasting, obviously, I don't think our neighbors will want us to do a whole lot of that. But we would love to go as deep as we could, especially, there's quite a bit of a drop-off on, on the 200 block, you know, from, from street to street, from Linden to Roslyn, there's a pretty significant drop-off. And then even on the 400 block, as you come from Oak Court over to Colfax. So ideally, if we could dig down and, and, and put a level, or two levels, or anything underground, that would be an ideal scenario. And the tiering that you mentioned, so a lot of what's going to really guide this is going to be some of those, those sun shade, those light studies, those. And so, you know, as we start to get to the edge of the Roslyn side of the 200 block, we're going to wanna make sure that thing, that that building steps back. And it steps back in a way, that we're not, you know, permanently shadowing the, the front yards of, of the folks there on Roslyn. All of that will come, you know, we'll be informed through the studies, and then through the design work that'll come after that.
Okay, and do you have a percentage of the building that, I know you've spoken before about the aesthetics of the building, and maybe using brick or some more aesthetically pleasing materials to fit better in with the neighborhood? So do you have a percentage of how much brick would be on these garages versus concrete?
I, no, I do not. That'll come during the design work. I think one of the things, like our, our current employee garage is, looks brick, it's actually pressed concrete. It's, you know, there's a lot they can do with building materials now. So when we're at that stage of design and we go out for a bid, there are companies out there doing some amazing work. So, you know, it, the material will really be determined by what we're trying to accomplish, what the structural integrity of the material is, what's available at the time. You know, when we, we started looking for other projects, press concrete, there was such a, or, they poured concrete with such a lag time that, you know, we switched companies because we weren't able to get it in time. So a lot of it's gonna be dependent on what's available at the time when we start to build also. There's a lot of variables that'll go into that.
Okay. And I know noise has been also talked a lot about, and, you know, the beeping, that would drive me crazy too. I can't handle if like, if a timer at work goes off, it needs to be shut off immediately. So, so I, I understand that you're not going to have, you don't expect to have that beeping with the new garages, because they'll be set back further to allow for, like vehicular traffic and those wider pedestrian sightlines. But I'm wondering about other noise factors, like with, with loud equipment and the construction over the course of, of several years, right?
So one of the things that, you know, certainly during construction, you know, they will adhere to the city's noise ordinances. We will ensure that. And that'll be part of the contractual obligation of the company, of the CM that we utilize. And the CMs that we've been utilizing in projects across our footprint have done a really nice job of making sure that they adhere to local municipalities' regulations when it comes to that. I, I'm not concerned about that. When we get to the spot where we're designing to minimize the impact, one of the challenges we have, when you look at Linden, especially between Arthur and Colfax, there's a lot of activity on that street. And a lot of it requires trucks to back up, and when trucks back up, they beep for safety. So there's constant noise, back and forth, filling the oxygen, wok oxygen, picking up dumpsters, doing things like that. Part of what we're gonna try to do with this design is to figure out a way to be able to minimize that disruption, minimize that noise, which means there's gotta be a way to get trucks to pull in and, and do the things that they need to do without excessive backing. And if they do have to back up, then how do we shield that noise in some way so we're not being disruptive? What you have today is an evolution of fifty-plus years of, of adding and subtracting and adjusting. What we wanna do now is purposely build this new addition so that we can eliminate some of those pain points. The beeping on the garage, I agree with you a hundred percent, Dr. Rothschild, it is annoying. And we wanna be able to solve that. And we think we can solve that just by designing the entry points for the garage to allow people to have visibility left and right before they're on the sidewalk, and then separating pedestrian and vehicle, vehicular traffic.
Okay, and do you plan on there being adequate landscaping around the, the buildings to benefit in with the neighborhood as well?
Yeah, the, so one of the things that, you know, just around the buildings, landscaping is a, is a finale. You have to have good landscaping. With good landscaping, you can really soften some of the hard lines. And I think we looked at one of those areas on the side of the visitors' garage, where we're looking at that fifteen-foot setback, and we had really nice trees and plants in there. It really softened the existing garage. We're looking at also adding green space, so in places where we've, we've taken a home down, but we don't intend to utilize that space, we wanna turn that into park space. However, that, if it's a pocket park, if it's a dog park, again, that's where we're gonna use that community, that, that advisory council for. We want them to tell us what, what, what we need to do with that space. So there will end up being a significant amount of green space, and all of those hard structures will be landscaped in to the extent we can, to include some green roofs.
Since you bring up the advisory council, I'm wondering if there will also be a community benefits agreement? Because I think the concern is, even if there's an advisory council, and if neighbors are involved with that, that they still might not be heard in, you know, what, what their opinions or, or suggestions are, that you might choose to still go another, another way. And so if there's a, a benefits agreement that, you know, would be able to hold to, okay, this is, like, this is the, the planned height, this is what we promised you for the, the amount of brick on the building, or the facade, or the amount of landscaping, or setbacks, like, I feel like those things would, would be helpful in, in those concerns.
Yeah, that would, I think that'd be really challenging to put on paper right now, being this early in the process. I would assume that the zoning probably has a lot of that already built into it. But, you know, again, kinda going back to our, we've been here for a number of years. We've been a part of the community, we've been a fabric of Scranton. We intend to be here for another hundred years. We want to make sure that we fit into the community. We develop that relationship, that trust, and what we say we do, we do. And if we can't do it, we explain it. And if we can't explain it, then maybe we need to think about why we're doing it, or why we're not doing it. There's gonna be a million changes that happen from today till the time we put a shovel in the ground. There'll be a million changes that happen from the time we put a shovel in the ground till the time we open the building, just because of the landscape. Construction inflation alone is up about fifteen percent, you know? So if that comes down, we can do other things. If that goes up, we may have to, you know, we may have to adjust some of the stuff that we're doing. Again, all of that has to be communicated, has to be shared. I think having somebody from the city, having on that community advisory council is a wonderful idea. I think having the neighbors there engaged in that dialogue is the right thing to do. But actually, you know, memorializing things like what exactly we're going to build before we've had a chance to design it, would be a little bit problematic.
Well, the community benefits agreements are pretty common, so I would encourage that to be developed or worked on with, with the advisory council.
Sure.
I think, I think that's something that's important. I mean, you could figure out what, along with the neighbors, what would be appropriate to be in there, but I, I would really like to push for that.
Okay.
And then, I know this is something that I asked you before, but will employees have to pay for the new garage? And why are they currently paying for the, the employee garage that you have now?
Yeah. You wanna take that one?
So currently, there's a two-year waiting list to get into the employee parking garage. And they do pay, at this point, to park in the employee parking garage. You know, it, we have done everything we can possibly do to free up space in that garage to decant Naog Park and stop folks from parking within the, the community, but it has been a challenge, to say the least. But yeah, they do pay.
And that money does not go into operations, that goes into foundation. It's, it's more of just a mechanism to help control that two-year waitlist. When we have enough parking, nobody's gonna pay. One of the first things we did when we purchased CMC was, we eliminated parking for patients and visitors.
Okay, because I'd hate to have to see employees park in, or employees pay to park in the new garage, and so then they're parking in the park anyway, which is what we're trying to avoid, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then, is, is Geisinger's ED fully staffed?
Is the what, I'm sorry?
Is the ED fully staffed?
So I think that one of the biggest challenges we have in, in healthcare, and I'm not even gonna say in Scranton or in Pennsylvania, in healthcare, is an adequate number of staff. Over the course of the pandemic, it's literally been a death by a thousand cuts when it comes to Scranton, when it comes to staffing. We've had a number of, and, and we're talking from the, from the physician level to the nurses, to phlebotomists, CT techs, you name it, everything it takes to run a hospital. We've had some challenges getting adequate staffing. A lot of folks left our workforce, a lot of folks have taken jobs where they can work from home, to be reviewers, to do things like that. There's been really sizable money that was, been offered for travel nurses. People have been able to, and in some cases, they've taken travel assignments and literally drove down the road to, to, to regional, and regionals nurses have taken travel assignments and came up and worked for us. The entire labor market has been turned upside down throughout the pandemic. We're starting to see that normalize now. We've actually seen some really impressive retention numbers. We're getting back to where we were at pre-pandemic in terms of retention. We've got some really good positive momentum on recruitment. We have some, some of our larger nurse recruiting classes coming in. We're investing in some local programs to, to help generate that next generation of healthcare providers. We actually invest in programs that go as far, it goes deep in schools as junior high and high school. We want them to see that there's a future. We want them to see that that future is healthcare, and there's a path forward for healthcare. And so when people come and they join our, our organization, if they want to go back to school, we have a path to help them go back to school. If they are uncomfortable with where they're at, in, in terms of their writing, their reading, their, their, their basic skillset, if it's been a decade or two since they went to school, we have a program called School at Work, where we, we actually help them stabilize that foundation so that they can go on and get some advanced clinical degrees. We do a number of things to establish that connection, to keep people in healthcare, to bring people in healthcare. On the physician side, we do the same thing. Our medical school, we actually have a program called Abigail Scholars, where we're using community investment to actually help these kids go to school, get a four-year medical degree. And it's free, as long as they come back and work in our community as a primary care physician. It's a tremendous program. That was the promise of the medical school. The promise of the medical school was to make sure that we had physicians in the future. We're starting to realize that promise. These kids that, that was in those first few classes are starting to come back now. The Abigail Scholarship Program will continue to encourage them to come back and work in our community and be a part of our, our, our medical community.
Okay, it's, it's good to know that there's a pipeline, but I'm wondering, with the, with the new ED in the future, then how would those concerns be corrected, like would? Do you feel like it'll be more attractive for, for employees to work there than with, you know, updated technology and, you know, more room for patients, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think an important component, and we'll take you back to what Dr. Bernetti said, the most important piece in that emergency room, the most critical piece is the bed. So regardless of the staffing, patients do not wait because of staffing. Patients are waiting because of space right now. And so as we expand or have the ability to expand, we're going to be able to bring in more technology, we're going to have access to radiology right in the department, that's a goal, right? So staff are not gonna be in that, while ERs are chaotic to the extent that you saw. It's just not, it doesn't function well, right? People are doing what they can to take care of patients in chairs, in, to get people in front of physicians as quickly as possible, and that sometimes is a chair, or a stretcher in the hallway, or whatever the case may be. So the reality of staffing is a true problem, yes, but the space is more valuable, and I, I don't wanna say that, the space is what, what is needed to recruit and bring people into the building.
Just take it down to a real granular story, this weekend. So if any of you were, you know, happened to be a patient within our emergency department, we saw over a hundred and eighty-some patients on one of the days in the emergency department. There was a wait time of up to eight hours to come back and be seen by one of our ER physicians and ER nurses. Our physicians were standing there, waiting to see people, with nothing to do, because every bed was occupied. Every bed was filled. Our ER nurses, completely, fully staffed, but we still could not bring anybody back. Over that one day and one weekend, we had eleven patients walk out, not seen. What happened to them? Did they have a bad outcome? We don't know. And the sickest, the most dangerous patient in the emergency department is the patient that you don't know is that sick. So that's a real-life example. It's not staffing, it's bed capacity. Without the beds, we cannot do anything.
So, do you know how many beds there are currently?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. What's, how many beds are in the proposed?
So, they asked that prior to stepping in, so it's indetermined yet. They have to do a feasibility study, population, demographics.
I have just one more question, then, then we'll move on, so the other council members can ask theirs. So, there's been a lot of talk about the potential for, for an expanded pediatric unit and services, so I'm wondering what you service as of now with your pediatrics, and where does that fit in with, with this plan? Because there, there's obviously a need within the community, and I've received calls from concerned parents about that, and, so I'd, I'd like to, to hear more of what you have planned for that.
So, I, I think along the same token, you know, the same lines that we talked with Councilman Schmerl, the programming's gonna be really key with this. So when we started this journey, you know, back in twenty nineteen, it was a very, very different landscape. We knew what we needed, and we knew where our focus was. We reactivated a shuttered OB program, and we built it out as a nurse-midwife program. And we did that very strategically because Moses Taylor had the market. They were by far the most, I don't wanna use the word dominant, but that, they were the program. That was the place to go if you were gonna have a baby. So we created the niche for that, to, to supplement. Fast forward three years, all of this has now changed. The entire women's and children's market looks different. And so when we go through the programming, that's part of what we'll, we'll be looking at. How do we readjust our plans? Do we need to add to? Do we need to subtract from? How do we make the adjustment for this new reality of a greatly expanded need for women's services and an, an absolute greatly expanded need for pediatrics? That'll be a really key part of the programming.
Okay, thank you.
So Dr. Rothschild?
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild.
It has to be. Pediatric Emergency Services, the resources to do a resuscitation for a pediatric patient, we've lost twenty-four beds with Moses Taylor going down. So we need that capacity, or our patients are gonna suffer.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes, thank you all for coming. And I truly believe that, you know, you are for the advancement of medicine and better medicine, and expanding services. Jesus, I'm sixty, so I'm gonna need a lot of them soon, sooner than later. But I have questions. And I wanna state that being for compromise is not being against advancement or expansion. I just want that clear. So you mentioned earlier about studies, that we've been asking about studies, and you refer to the civic studies, and that's fine, that's the lighting, the traffic studies, the noise pollution. And, and you've confirmed to us that they're not gonna happen until some type of zoning's passed and land development begins, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, with that- Okay, so with that said, and you know, we touched a little bit on underground parking, and that's the question I have. So, okay, you didn't do them studies, but did you explore or do any studies related to underground parking, like the the reservoir space, the requirements, feasibility and such? Because you did mention earlier that, well, maybe if we had a little rock, we might go a little deeper. But when you say that, I mean, do you mean, are you going to go as deep as say, okay, so the compromise, obviously, from from the hill is 100 feet to 45. And to me, that's the distance between me and this wall. That doesn't look like, you know, a huge ask, and and I don't see, I mean, you're saying it might affect the freeing up of space to provide other services or adequate services. But my question lies, did you really take a deep dive about going underground versus going up?
No, as and as I mentioned before, we we've not done any of those studies yet. The, everything starts with zoning, and once we, once we know what our zoning is, what our setbacks are, what our height restrictions, what our permeable space is, and then we actually, then we'll contract with our our engineers, we'll contract with our our civil firms to go in and start doing all of those studies, making sure that we can, what's underneath there? How deep can we go? What's feasible? What's not feasible? Is there a water table issue? All of that requires a significant investment in time and resources, an investment that doesn't make sense to make until we know if we're going to be, if we're going to have the right zoning or not.
So an architect didn't even take a, that's not even his thought, his or her thought process at this time?
No, we need, you know, we have to do some geo samples. We have to get in there and actually find out what's there and do a lot. That's where one of our civil engineering firms would come in and help us out. We do believe that there's rock under there. We ran into some rock before with the expansion. But there's a lot of work that has to be done to make sure that what we're building is not, is environmentally sustainable, it's not disruptive, it doesn't have any inadvertent ripple effects. You know, as you were saying, if we get too deep and you find water table issues, all of that comes through the civil environmental studies.
Okay, thank you. So my next question, so earlier on, you had a line item on there about pilots and taxes.
Yes, sir.
So clarify to me, because I wish I had a copy of today's PowerPoint, because you went through them too quick. I'd like to refer back to them. So I'm trying to remember the $74 million number, you referred to as community benefits. Was that since 2021, or was that 21's number? And that $74 million community benefit, was that all of Geisinger and its communities, or is that Scranton?
That's Scranton, and that's a 21 number. What we can do is we, we can get you the the breakdown of that, we can show you what that is. Significant portion of that's uncompensated care. That is, that's, and then there's a significant portion of that, that we're making investments back into the community. Everything from, you know, supporting, as I mentioned, supporting nonprofit programs to ensure that we don't have food deserts, to supporting things like the the half marathon, supporting nonprofits that are providing transportation for oncology patients. So the investments we make in the.
I would ask everyone to please allow Mr. Beer to speak, and we're going to do the same when everyone else has an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
But the investments we make in our community, plus the uncompensated care, that's what comes up to that $74 million number.
So, well, thank you for that and and your generosity. So that was 21's number. Could, like you, you said you you offered, would you provide counsel as a whole, 22's number, 23's number? And a better breakdown than what you've explained, like, I'd like to know what you've you've championed for us in the city and.
Yep, absolutely. We can share with you. Yep.
Thank you. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you. So I know I came in on the the end of this, but is any of the design work complete as of now?
No, sir.
So you haven't done any design work for these several blocks?
We've done, no, we've done very preliminary. You know, one of the things, as we were meeting with the neighbors, the, one of the reoccurring asks was, we really need to understand what this looks like. Can you do some sort of rendering, some sort of drawing? So we put together literally blocks on a page. We had some artist renderings of what a garage might look like to show that they can actually look like commercial buildings, they don't have to look like, you know, the the formed concrete. And so we showed those, we showed, then the rest of it was just kind of proportional blocks on a page. We have not invested in any substantial design work.
Okay, so I did, I asked a little bit about the beds, but right now, we were talking parking garages, and we were talking amount of parking spaces. Do the amount of beds, do they directly correlate with the amount of parking spaces?
Most of what we're starting to see is, we're starting to see, you know, a lot of the work we're doing, it's, there are some planning factors on what we need. We're seeing a lot, we still have a significant amount of outpatient surgery that we see, there's still some of that in and out. Our staffing is different than other hospitals, given the complexity and the acuity of our patients, so that requires some additional staff. But there, there are benchmarks that are guidelines, so we can, I don't know, Renee, do you have any additional details on that?
So there are calculations that are done based on the amount of inpatient beds and how many parking spaces are allocated to those. We can certainly share that. I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, we have that.
Yeah, I feel like I've been given an exact number on parking spaces, but just not an exact number on everything else when it comes to this project. So I don't know where we're deriving the numbers for parking spaces at, if we don't know how many, how many beds or how much of actual hospital space.
Yeah, we can, we can share the calculation with you, so you can see it for sure.
Okay. I could see that, I heard that you didn't have a noise study done, and I know noise studies come when the construction work is being done, and you'll stick to city ordinances when it comes to that. Some of the things like line of sight studies, lighting studies, you might be able to base off of what's currently there as to what's going to be built on. Day and night renderings possibly of proposed projects. So you said you put some renderings together. Do you have anything in terms of line of sight studies, lighting, or day and night renderings?
We haven't done any of those.
Okay, and with proposed traffic, so you think you know about how many spots you need, how many cars are going to be in this area at any one given point in time? Has there been any traffic studies?
There has not.
And all of this stuff, all of these studies are, they're not going to begin until the zoning has passed?
Correct.
Okay. I did hear some talk about going underground back in, so I've somewhat been involved with this on the planning commission back to the Audubon project when the school was still there. At that point in time, Geisinger did say, in the site of the Audubon School, you would probably be going underground there. Do you know if you're going to be going underground at this point in time?
You know, ideally, we would go underground, we would go as deep, you know, as we could, but that's all going to be, that's all going to be directed by our civil studies. You know, so once we get our engineers, our civil firms in to look at that and and really be able to explain if that's even feasible or not, you know, that one, I do remember seeing the the study, or not the study, the, the idea was a medical office building on that site at that time, but I don't think they did any additional studies. There was none available at that time. I think it was just a concept, an idea.
Okay. When we were talking about the 60 feet, so the neighborhood would like the height restrictions to 45 feet, like Mr. McAndrew, I feel this is a compromiser, a, you know, an ask that that could be had. Do you see a parking garage being able to make up for that 60 feet in the 200 block, say, of Colfax?
I'm sorry, can you?
Can, can we stick to the 45-foot height restrictions on the 200 of Colfax while making up for the 60 feet that we would take off the top in underground parking spaces?
You know, I think a lot of that will have to, I mean, it'll depend on what we actually find. You know, if we have that ability, you know, if if we can go under, if you take two off the top and you can put two, you know, underground, that's a perfect compromise, that's a perfect way to do it. But we just don't know that yet. You know, I mean, that would be probably the ideal scenario, that way, you know, I think then it would, it would lower the height of that that garage. There's been a lot of work, a lot of compromise with the neighbors, you know, as we've talked about, you know, earlier in the presentation, we talked about, you know, trying to consolidate all of the activity, all of the high-intensity noise, the high-intensity light on the 300 block, really looking at, at how do we blend in the buildings? How do we? And and so as we came up with, if we take the entire 400 and we put it at that 45, the 200 is shorter, and so it had to go up, you know, to the, to the eight stories. That'd get us that that parking count we think we need. So there's been quite a bit of compromise. Ideally, we're not done compromising, we would still like to do more. So if we can go underground, if we can take a level or two and put it in there, that will be, that will be perfect.
I think a lot of the difficulty here with with myself and others is understanding, trying to understand this without seeing a plan.
Yeah.
So if a plan was in place or a plan was presented, you know, we would be able to see that a little bit different.
Yeah.
And the way I see it here is if we were to curtail the 200 block at 45 feet, and you came in with some soil studies or some ground studies to say we can go under, that would be that compromise, but you would have a plan coming to the table with that. If you weren't able to go underground, you would also have to come back to the zoning board with the plan to see about getting a variance for that, and I see that as something that could occur at that time. But again, you'd be coming to the table with the plan. And that would be, make it easier for me. That would make it easier for me to make that decision.
Certainly, I understand that.
I think that's all, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. So I just have a few, a number of the questions I was about to ask have already been answered, but in a recent article in the Times Tribune, noted that Geisinger experienced $842 million loss for 2022, indicating that operating costs outpaced revenue along with the portfolio reductions.
Yeah.
What impact will these huge losses have on Geisinger's ability to move forward with this proposed expansion project in Scranton?
The short answer is it won't have any impact. The long answer, which is what you deserve, is we have all faced these industry headwinds. I actually, I get a blog every day from an organization called Becker's. It is a consolidator of healthcare news, and every day you see every system across America are struggling right now financially. Labor headwinds, inflation headwinds, supply headwinds, you know, it's, it's been compounding, and so we're not immune to that. However, we have a two-pronged strategy, and part of which Renee had talked about is the way we innovate, the way we look at things. So we're making very strategic investments. We're not making investments everywhere, all the time. We're making very strategic investments. You'll notice there was just another article preceded that one by a few weeks, where we've actually stopped construction on a dedicated musculoskeletal hospital up in the Bloomsburg market. Part of the reason why is the world changed. We went and we relooked the demographics, we relooked what was happening with outpatient orthopedic surgeries, and we realized the model didn't make sense, so we paused it. We're going to reevaluate what that hospital's going to look like. And and so those are part of that strategic investments. We're only going to make investments where it makes sense, where we'll have the biggest impact on the community. Scranton remains the number one priority for us to make a community investment. The need is there. The second piece of that is expense reduction. As with any business, when you're facing these financial headwinds, you have to make adjustments, you have to make expense reductions. So some of the things that we're doing is we're trying to be very strategic about our expense reductions. We're looking at things where we can utilize automation in order to help with, so we talked about staffing. At any given time across a hospital in America, you've got a significant number of nurses doing audits, nothing else but audits. These are highly trained, highly competent clinical assets, literally doing counts in a, in a record. We have figured out how to use AI and how to use our technology and our our electronic medical record to do all of that automatically. So all of our audits are now being generated using AI. That's freed up nurses back to the bedside. Those are examples, that's an example of the expense reduction. That's happening multiple times over multiple hospitals. So our two-pronged strategy, strategic expense reduction and appropriate investment.
Thank you. And that's kind of a good segue into my next question. So you had all these plans in Bloomsburg, and you were going to build this hospital, and all of a sudden it stopped. I'm assuming you probably purchased land and you were well on your way to this project. So several residents have expressed concerns that if Geisinger gets zoning approval for garage structures, it will end there, and the remainder of the hospital expansion may never happen. Can you provide some assurances that the parking garage expansion are only part of the overall project? That's, and it's the full intention of Geisinger to complete the actual hospital expansion that you didn't do, you didn't complete in Bloomsburg, but I need assurances you're going to complete it in Scranton? Because the fear is we're going to be left with empty, empty lots, no actual expansion on the hospital, and we'll end up what happened on Gibson Street between Moses Taylor and Regional Hospital.
Again, short answer, 100%. Long answer, which is what you deserve, we're not in the parking business. You know, when we look at what we're trying to accomplish, we're in the healthcare business, and our goal is to provide healthcare for the community. The parking garages are just enabling projects. That's only what they're there for. It allows us to clear that path so that we can expand the hospital. We have been around for well over 100 years, providing high-quality, effective, efficient healthcare, not parking. Parking garages are extremely expensive. If I could wave a magic wand, I'd have surface parking. It's so much cheaper to to build. Parking garages are really expensive. It would make no financial, fiscal sense to build a parking garage and not build the complementary clinical resources that would, that's needed in order to even pay for those parking garages, let alone take care of the community.
Thank you. Can we be assured, can we be assured that if you end up getting the zoning approval, that every one of those cars that's parked in the AUG park down on the backside are going to be out of there?
I wish I could say I could assure you, but humans are humans. Our intent, if we did the count right, we've got enough to absorb all of the cars that are in the current garages, the cars that are in Naug, and the cars that are in the secondary Dunmore lot that we use, with a little bit with room to expand. So the intent is to free up Naug, the goal is to free up Naug, and we will do everything we can, working with Mr. Gatten and the Park Authority, to make sure that our employees are not sneaking back there. Based on the conversations we have with our employees, don't think that's going to be an issue. Most of our employees will be thrilled that they have the ability to park in covered parking with easy access to the hospital, where they they feel, you know, they're close, they're easy, their cars, you know, inside, outside of the weather. I don't think that's going to be an issue, but I can assure you that we will, you know, we'll do everything we can to make sure our staff's not parking there.
One of my questions had to do with additional medical services, and I've already heard the answer to that. So it sounds like that you have met with the Neighborhood Association, you have made some modifications from what you were originally planning.
Yeah.
And it sounds like this continues to be fluid in terms of, fluid and flexible in terms of making changes. So it's my understanding that in the 400 block of Colfax, that there's still 75 feet left to extend down that block. Do, do you know, or can your architects or engineers let us know, by extending that that extra 75 feet, how much more parking would that add that would help then reduce the size of the parking in the 200 block?
Yeah, we can get that. We can do a rough calculation. Our intent was to leave that kind of a green zone on that side, but yeah, we can, we can get an estimate on will that, how many additional spaces that could give us.
Can you get one within a week?
We can try.
Okay.
Might be a rough order of magnitude.
Right. No, I understand.
Yeah.
I understand that, okay. And my other question that I had, had to do with the start to finish, and, you know, I'm well aware of land development, being in construction myself, I know that 12 to 18 months is probably even a little aggressive. Okay, so I want to take this opportunity to thank you for coming here this evening, presenting to council and the citizens that are here this evening. You're welcome to hang around. We're going to start the public hearing in about two or three minutes. I'm going to see if our council needs to use the bathroom, grab a water, and then we'll begin the public hearing. Thank you very much.